It's five o'clock, everyone. And before we start our work session, I wanted to say that no one called me on the carpet last work session because we did not have a song. So what that told me is we were all so preoccupied with the topic that didn't cross our mind. However, here we are this evening for another work session. And I've selected the song for this evening. And wanting to recognize that today is the start of the World Series between the Atlanta Braves and the Houston Astros. My song for the evening is Take Me Out to the Ballgame. I don't have a rendition that we're recording. Just what comes to mind is Bill Murray and Harry Carey singing this at the Chicago Cubs stadium, which is always was kind of an interesting experience. But with that, I'm going to say play ball. And I'm calling to call to order the October 26, 2021 work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. For the record, so we can acknowledge board members who are present for the work session, that it's not mandatory. I'll start with you, Mr. Evans. Are you present?
I am present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. I know you're there somewhere, Ms. Bittersmith. I'll move on to Mrs. McGrath.
I'm present.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
I'm presently present.
Well, stay that way. Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. What I note on the participant list is we do have Ms. Bittersmith. We heard her do a voice check later, I mean earlier. Ms. Bittersmith.
May I try again?
You may.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what happened earlier. I was, yeah, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Ms. Smith, are you present? All right, I'm going to say that for purposes of the meeting right now. On the record, we have five board members present with the exception of Ms. Smith and Ms. Nguyen. I expect if they connect, we'll make note of that for the record. I want to also remind everyone that we are live captioning our meetings. And so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting site where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So tonight for our work session, we are being provided a report on one item, and that is enrollment management and student experience improvements. So with that, Dr. Gonzalez, glad to have you aboard tonight. And would you like to introduce our presenters, please?
Absolutely. President Sullivan, members of the board, and sort of in spirit with the song you selected, we're hoping to get up and hit a home run here. So we have Dr. Leszynski, our interim provost, Dr. Mark Cohen, our chief information officer, Dr. Keisha Brock, who is our associate vice chancellor of student affairs, and Ms. Matina Sellers, who is associate vice chancellor of academic affairs, will provide a presentation on enrollment management and the student experience improvements. So essentially, things that we've been working on for the last several months to improve overall the processes that our students experience as they are being recruited, registering, being admitted, that entire process until they matriculate with us. I'll note that earlier this afternoon, I emailed the board an article based on some data that went public yesterday and today. And various news outlets, including those in higher education, are picking up this information. And it's just really telling a story about where enrollment is across our country. And that overall, there's been an enrollment decline for all colleges and universities at about three and a half percent. And community colleges, as discussed in the reports that I'm reading, have been particularly hit harder than our four-year universities. And community colleges have experienced about 14% to 15% decline since the fall of 2019, which is very similar to the experience that we've been having in Maricopa. So I share that with you so that you have a national landscape before you as we begin to dig into some data here and dig into the work that we're doing here to improve the enrollment process, thereby improving enrollment with what's going on in our, you know, across the country as a backdrop here. So thank you for that lengthy introduction, for giving me the time to do that. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Leszynski and his team.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Gonzalez and President Sullivan, members of the governing board, our members of CEC and guests. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. And we're very excited to share with you some of the strategies and improvements that, again, as Chancellor Gonzalez stated, that we've been working on to truly enhance the student experience. Our student experience and enrollment is critical for all of us who are on this call. It's critical to our 10 community colleges in our system. And more importantly, it's critical to our community as we are preparing our future workforce and the leaders of our county, state, and ultimately our nation as well. Please know, though, that although we have three district leaders that will be sharing our information tonight, this is truly a collaborative process with our colleges. And as a system, we rely on the great work of our staff, our faculty, and our administrators to positively influence enrollment and the student experience. So with that context in mind, in the context that Chancellor Gonzalez provided, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Keisha Brock, who will begin the presentation. And hopefully, we'll be in store for some great questions and answers towards the end as well. Dr. Brock.
Thank you, Dr. Leszynski. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Keisha Brock. And my colleagues and I are excited to share some changes that are underway to improve the student experience. Next slide. Here's a quick roadmap for today's work session. First, I will share a few slides to establish a common understanding about the complexity of enrollment management and the things we are able to positively influence to support enrollment growth and a positive student experience. I will then pass the mic to ABC Sellers to walk you through the changes that are underway to improve an important piece of the student experience, the admissions and enrollment process. We will look at those improvements through several different lenses to include business processes, how to best leverage data, and human resources. Next, Dr. Cohen will share technology improvements that have been made to online admissions along with an exciting set of tools that he and his team are working to implement. Next slide. So there are many internal and external factors that influence a college's ability to maintain optimal enrollment levels. And as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, colleges and universities around the nation have been struggling for the very obvious social and public health issues related to COVID. But there are many external factors like student behavior, a competitive landscape, public policy, economic trends that we don't have a lot of influence or control over, but that can dramatically influence our ability to attract and admit new students. Internally, which is what this slide is demonstrating, there are also many areas that we can make adjustments to to positively impact enrollment. We often focus all of our energy and discussion around the three on the left-hand side: marketing, recruitment, and admissions. However, retention, course scheduling, readily available financial support all also make a significant impact on enrollment. However, for today's work session, we are going to focus on one of the areas on the left side, the front end of the student lifecycle. Next slide. So as you can see from this ideal state of the student journey, there are many gears that must work together to move the student from inquiry to enrolled. The gears need to have all of their teeth, and they must work together to create a positive student experience. In the ideal state, it would look like this. However, we know that we have some gears that don't have all their teeth or aren't working as effectively as we would like them to for a variety of reasons, and that this can have a negative impact on the student experience. The updates that we're about to share are focused on improvements that are underway to two of these gears: the admissions and the registration gear. Next slide. So in order to improve the admissions and registration process, we focused not only on making improvements to the technology, which is critically important, but also on how the experience could be improved through business process changes, using, better using data to support a more personalized student journey, and then how best to utilize our most valuable resource, our people. So with that, I am going to turn it over to ABC Sellers. And you can advance to the next slide while we're transitioning.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. As Chancellor Gonzalez mentioned, a group of leaders and across the district collaborated to ask ourselves a question. When we approached the problem, we wanted to know, what do we want students to experience? So we engaged in a series of work sessions using design thinking approach that really put the student at the center. We asked ourselves a series of questions. And when we came out the other side, we wanted to know, you know, a student should be able to complete our processes easily. In the online space, as a consumer, you're able to navigate through applications, through apps on your phone. Sometimes it even feels fun. We want our students to be acknowledged and celebrated during and when the processes are complete. Right? You did this. Congratulations. You're now a Thunderbird, a Gecko. And we want them to be contacted and feel connected, establish and establish a relationship with one of the many great people at our colleges. We know that a sense of connection is one of the most important things that will help bring a consumer and a student, in this particular case, back. Next slide. So how would we accomplish this? We had a series of kind of really digging in work sessions to ask ourselves what needs to be changed, what needs to be revised, what needs to be thrown out and start over again. And this is where we landed. We knew that we had to redesign the process to be simple, more high-touch and dynamic and celebratory. How do we do that? We returned to requesting basic information for the application process. We simplified, especially in initial steps, program and college choice. When possible, we eliminate business process barriers. When we had conversations about where our students get stuck, where they need help, some of these were our process barriers that we created unintentionally. And so we looked at those critically and determined which ones could be removed and which ones were critical for us to continue. In spaces where they had to continue, we really focused on providing clarification on why. There's questions that we ask that are maybe unfamiliar to students new to our institution. And so we focused on helping them understand why we were asking for information and why it was necessary. We look to provide help points throughout where students can be connected to support and human touch experience. Of all of the steps, I think this one was the most illuminating for us. We knew that most of the cases where a student became extremely frustrated or had to have their support escalated, it was because they got absolutely stuck and didn't know how to connect to a person who could help them through the next, to the next point in the process. And so we really kind of honed in on how we could do this either through the application and in opportunities where they could link out and be connected to a real-life person. And then lastly, reexamining our service standards. So this is the people aspect of the work. Are we providing enough support to our staff? Are we providing enough information about the changes and the nuances of the tools and our processes? And can we review those and make improvements overall related to our customer service experience? Next slide, please. So as Dr. Brock mentioned, another one of our organizational levers is being data informed. So as we looked at our process, we started to use data to personalize what a student will experience. So when you come to us, not all students are the same. Your journey is a little bit different. And so we are looking to refine what you have to do based on who you are. Maybe you're a student who just wants to come and take music lessons or a second language class. Maybe you're a dual-enrollment student coming, or an early college student coming to Maricopa. We looked at each of those journeys and began to refine and update each of those processes based on who you are. And so that's a space where we'll make continued improvements related to the messages you receive, your to-do list items, what do you have to do next, and your next steps. Next slide, please. Another way that we are using data to inform our improvements is creating a series of tools that our staff can use to help move students through our pipeline. So a series of enrollment pipeline dashboards that are supporting our outreach efforts. So we know that students have to be contacted, you know, on average, three to four times before they enroll with us. And so learning, knowing a little bit more about who we're contacting, what their interests are in coming to us, helps inform the work that our college teams do, that our centralized teams do to recruit and retain our students. Again, using the information that we have to refine our marketing information and our student journeys based on their characteristics and behaviors. Next slide. Business process redesign. So this was a pretty significant portion of our analysis work and our redesign efforts because we really focused on what barriers did we create, either by design or unintentionally, to streamline a student's process. One of the big things that we have done by design was create hard stops, as we call them, where a student has to stop and complete an action before they're able to move forward. As part of this process, we really looked at, is our desired, is our interest in really helping the student move as far as they can in the process, and then creating touchpoints to come back to them and engage with them to understand what they need to do. And so we looked at that. We looked at that in several places, and we removed those to help students move through quicker and have more engagement with our student affairs professionals much earlier in the process. Next slide. And people. Last but absolutely not least, people. So as we did this work, we know that the technology is only as good as the people and the supports that we provide to our teams. And so both centrally and at the colleges, continuing to collaborate on the high-touch interaction points. Where do students need help? How can we get them to the right help at the colleges? How can centralized support help the colleges in moving these students through and getting them connected to the right places in the process? So one of the things that we're launching in this update, and Dr. Cohen will share a little bit about that, is the insertion of get-help points. So you may have seen this in an app or online where you're stuck. You're completing maybe TurboTax, and you get stuck to a place, and you say, I need help. And you click on it, and it either sends you to a live chat or it gives you a phone number where you can contact a person. We're starting to insert those based on data that we know where students were most commonly getting stuck. We'll continue to work on strategies that move our advising ratios closer to where the recommended ratios are and leveraging technology where we can use technology and really creating space and opportunity for our people to do what they do best. Same thing with expansion of group advising. A lot of our colleges already have this as a best practice. And so really moving transactions where transactions can happen and leveraging our people for the really a deep and meaningful connections and conversations that need to happen with students. Next slide. And with this, I'll transition to Dr. Cohen, who will share a little bit about the technology elements of our improvements and share a little bit about the technology roadmap. Dr. Cohen?
Thank you. So the technology, as my colleagues mentioned, is only a piece of the larger puzzle, but it's an important piece of the puzzle. And so based on the feedback that was provided to us from the cross-functional team that you just heard about, ITS made 13 improvements to the online admissions application as well as changes to the underlying PeopleSoft Student Information System and the tools available to help support students who are navigating our processes and the staff who are standing by to support them. We believe that these changes will make a dramatic difference in how students experience the front door of Maricopa. Things that we knew were pain points for our students have been addressed. You can see here that we've worked on things like more student-friendly language and updated look and feel, greater success ratios for people who are supplying their ID for verification. And the entire process has been simplified and streamlined to help students be successful in that first interaction with us in some cases. Enhancements that are still coming will be released here before we open up for early registration in a couple of weeks. And that will include the live support that was just mentioned and chatbot technology so that if our agents are unavailable because of a peak load, for example, they will have the ability to ask their questions of an automated chatbot based on internal articles that Maricopa has developed to answer the most common questions. And that's powered by machine learning to make sure that the more questions students ask, the more we learn about what the right answers are so that over time, that service gets better and better and is more helpful to the students who have to ask it questions. We've got more improvements coming for the spring and a completely new experience plan for next fall as we look to rewrite the application from the ground up. So a lot of work has been done on the admissions front and the underlying SIS technology. And then I want to talk a little bit about the technology that our support teams use for students. Next slide, please. So we've released a platform called Assist. And it's very innovative, and it has a holistic approach to the entire student lifecycle. So this tool allows our student affairs professionals to help students at any point on their journey, from the very first conversation they might have with us all the way through to graduation. This tool is unique in the industry in that it has been put together based on a variety of very mature, capable tools that have been integrated to create a single pane of glass for our student affairs professionals to deliver the kind of service that our students expect and the kind of service that other educational institutions may be able to provide them, but that for Maricopa has for some time been somewhat fractious. We believe that developing this tool even further will continue to move a number of results that we are interested in, not just around enrollment, but also around things like retention and completion. So I want to talk a little bit now, next slide, please, about where the platform stands. A variety of capabilities have already been delivered. A live service capability is in place, and that's how we can help students in the admissions application. If they get stuck, they'll be directed to a team of folks who are standing by to help them with whatever part of the application might be tripping them up. We've also released an entirely new data platform underneath it that will not only serve applications like Assist, but will also help our IR teams and provide better reporting and dashboards for decision-makers in Maricopa. Then more recently, we released a complete knowledge management system that allows us to have custom but consistent answers across the entire system to serve students and make sure that our support agents and student affairs people have the right information to serve students quickly and accurately. We also have ingested about three and a half million records so that we can find relevant information about students very quickly and serve them more rapidly and more accurately. And we've released two tools called Journeys and Surveys that allow us to do outreach and automated nudges and collect information from people using the Assist platform. So that's what exists today. And then next slide, please. Next up will be Case Management and an appointment-setting tool that will sync with employees' Google calendars so that they can track interactions with students and future appointments that they've set to make that easier for everyone to manage key student interactions. We've also got an early alert capability planned for the spring that will help us detect when students may be struggling so that people can intervene before it's too late for those students, and we can help get them back on the path before they wind up having difficulty in a class that's going to wind up on their semester grade or their transcript. And then later this year, over the summer, we plan to release Document Management, which will help with completing the student record and making sure that materials that are provided by students or that exist in a digital form are all attached to a single student record. Next slide, please. The innovative work that we're doing on the Assist platform has garnered national attention from organizations like the Ada Center and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. They've already funded us at over half a million dollars. A grant will be coming forward at the next board meeting that we just received from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation based on a competitive process that we started back in June. So it's been a lengthy process, but we're happy to report that we've been awarded. And that will be coming forward at the next board meeting. So we think that the Assist platform has a lot to offer Maricopa, and we're very, very excited about the capabilities that it will bring that, in fact, in many cases, don't exist in the market and something that certainly our folks haven't had at their fingertips for a long time. And we're excited to be able to bring that to the table. So with that, I think we'll open the discussion for any questions you might have.
Thank you, everyone. And I want to say congratulations on the grant. And that's pretty exciting. And when you say you're bringing it to the board, well, I'll go back to the other stuff. But since you just showed that slide, is this $500,000 on top of previous monies awarded? Or will we be reacting to a new award? But $500,000 is pretty impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you, President Sullivan. This is a $500,000 grant. We also received some funding earlier in the year that was a lower amount, but it was for a presentation that we gave to Bill Gates and his leadership team at the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. They had asked us to come speak to Bill Gates in what they call a learning session. And so we were able to provide that presentation, and it was compensated, so also generated some revenue for Maricopa.
Well, very, very good. And again, congratulations on your work that drove that application and then subsequently, your success through the competitive process. So thank you very much. I really think that's impressive. And I know with your work, that'll go a long way to supporting our transitions to responding to our students and our community in this particular aspect of enrollment as we're looking at registration and then, of course, all the other things to come. So board members, and I want to congratulate the whole team, Dr. Leszynski and Dr. Gonzalez, on presenting this information. I know our interest has been that we pay attention to enrollment. And I understand, per the slides, that this is just one aspect of enrollment. And we look forward to hearing about other elements, the financial piece, et cetera, as time goes on. But as we're concentrating on this area this evening, I want to thank you for your attention to that. Board members, I know this is cumbersome, but let's just open it up for questions. And as I often do, I'll go in alphabetical order. But instead of starting with the Bs, I'm going to start with the W's since Mrs. Nguyen has joined us. So Ms. Nguyen, do you have any questions this evening?
Thank you for the presentation. And I got to see, I believe, almost all of it. And really, it's long overdue. I think we all would agree that having a technology-savvy way to engage students into our college system has been needed for a very long time. As it sounds to me like you're rolling it out in stages. So like, you're going to have certain capabilities that you have now, and you're going to add to those. How are you garnering feedback from each stage so that you know how to adjust what your... And I may have missed this, but how... So if I'm a student and I encounter some difficulties, and then you resolve the difficulties, are you then asking them, like, for feedback at the end of that so that you can continue to fine-tune and react to the needs of the students? Is that a fair question?
And Dr. Leszynski, do you want to manage who answers these questions for us, please?
Sure, President Sullivan. I'd be glad to do so. And Ms. Nguyen, board member Nguyen, thank you so much for the question. I'll do my best to, you know, try to navigate through who can answer which one from the team. And I think that was Dr. Brock, who was about to chime in to answer that one.
Yes, thank you. Thanks so much. Yes, we collect a number, well, a lot of data from our students as they enter the pipeline, both at the college and at the system level. Couple of the things we look at. One, we look at call drivers, which the technology tools we're able to use right now do allow us to check or track call drivers. We also, and one of these new pieces of technology We also, and one of these new pieces of technology we're using in our Maricopa contact center, we're able to gauge sentiment so we can see what positive and negative words are mentioned and then make adjustments that way. And then also we just survey our students. We do a lot of survey work. And one of the things we could do is either do a focus group or a combination of a focus group and maybe one or two question survey at the end of this first rollout to see what sorts of adjustments might need to be made as we continue to move forward with improvements.
I think it would be very valuable, since you're spending all this energy, that that feedback might be the most critical information you get to see. We all have great ideas, but if we don't know what our consumers really want. And, and then the world of technology, it's quickly changing. So I applaud you on your efforts and the mechanisms you currently put in place. So thank you.
President Sullivan, if I may weigh in.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I thank you, Mrs. Nguyen, for your comments and feedback there. Absolutely agree. And, and I don't know if you were on whenever this started, but it was introduced that we were using design thinking principles here, which puts the, if it's business, it puts the consumer, if it's academics and what we do, it puts the student at the very front. And we work with those students and ask them questions and asking them what they want and what they need through this process. We develop it, we come back, we ask them if we hit the mark, we take their feedback, we go back and we make changes again. We come back and it's an iterative process until we roll it out and we have what we think is perfect as developed, you know, based on what those student needs are. So it's a good process. So I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. So I'll keep, Dr. Thor, your turn.
Thank you. And I think Dr. Gonzalez may have answered, just answered my question. ABC Selus talked about there being a series of work sessions. So I had two questions there. Were students involved in those sessions? And were frontline college staff involved in those sessions?
Thanks for the question, board member Thor. And ABC Selus, would you be able to provide a little more context regarding the work sessions?
Yes, Dr. Thor. So we did have a cross functional group of professionals from across the colleges as well as the district office who work in these spaces, participating in the work sessions. And we did not have direct students because we ran the majority of the sessions during the summer. But we had the honor of working with Anna Chandler, who, from our employee senate, who, whose primary role is working directly with high school students. And so she actually worked with us to get permission from a student to record them going through the process and her talking them through the process. And really, it was very illuminating for us. We've also worked closely. We got a lot of feedback from our early college and outreach teams who shared a lot about the students' experiences that we use to inform our early design decisions. I think as our designs are, as our releases are scheduled to kind of align with our registration and enrollment cycles, we're hopeful that through the work of Dr. Brock and her team and the colleges, that we'll be able to get more student engagement in our subsequent releases.
Okay, that sounds a little different than what Dr. Gonzalez said, but thank you. My other question is, is Assist a homegrown application? Or did we license it from a vendor and then improve upon it? I'm not clear about that.
Mark, would you be able to clarify that one for us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Provost Lucinski. Thank you for your question, Dr. Thor. The, the answer is the primary tools behind Assist are very mature, open source products, which saves us an enormous amount of money in per seat licensing cost, which is the dominant software model these days for these types of tools. But because we're using open source technologies for many of these, it enables us to expand the reach of these tools. We don't have to limit who can use them, as is often the case with expensive proprietary solutions. And we are making some modifications to those tools so they work properly in our segment and particularly for community colleges. The other thing that we're doing is we are hosting these tools on AWS, the Amazon Web Services Cloud, which is the premier cloud and is proprietary, but is a very reliable, cost effective, secure place to host these applications. So it's a mixture of some proprietary services like AWS, some open source tools, like the CRM and the marketing automation tools that we're using, and some custom code or configuration that Maricopa is developing to integrate them all together into this comprehensive student success suite. So I know that was kind of a long and complicated answer to your question.
Actually, to, actually, I was going to say that's a very interesting answer and not what I participated, anticipated. So as we are making improvements to some of these open source products, are we going to be contributing them back into the open source world?
That's a fantastic question. The answer is absolutely. We believe that we are in a position to help other community colleges who may be facing the same set of challenges based on market solutions that are oftentimes designed for four-year institutions and not community colleges, oftentimes not designed for federated systems like ours. And so we believe that one of the things that we can do is contribute back the code that we're developing to help other institutions potentially adopt a similar approach and some of these same open source tools. So that is absolutely part of our plan.
Great. Thank you very much. And this looks very, very exciting and very on point in terms of what the board has been asking for based on the feedback that we get from community members and students. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Smith, are you present with us? I wasn't clear if you've been able to join us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And thank you for being with us. So it's your turn.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I actually, I'm not going to pose any questions because I had an opportunity to hear a bit at another point in time during the other meeting that was referenced. And so I'll defer to my other colleagues to ask more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Narini.
Thank you. If we're in person, you'd see me standing up applauding because this is fantastic. This is great. This is stuff that we need, that stuff. It's like Ms. Nguyen said, long, long overdue. And it's, and it's critical. And again, back to some of the things we, that's already been discussed in the work session, the groups. One of the groups that it sounds like we are missing for input was those of us on the other side of the desk, and I have my other hat on now, from the counselors and the student, the individuals who are working with the students before they get to our door. The way, the way that it's laid out here, it sounds like, you know, we've got all the students in the parking lot, we just need to smooth them in. But there's lots of things that can happen on the other side that can prepare our students for, for this journey. And so as we, as we move forward, I would encourage you to, to include school counselors or CBOs or even HR people in the process. So, because we see some things that, that you don't see on the other end because we're working with the students on a, on a daily basis on one port of the, one part of all of this. So I would encourage you to, to include some counselors and include some people who are working with the students as you, as you develop and collect the data and interview those individuals as well to help refine the, the system. So with that, the other thing, as we roll this out, I mean, there's no secret that the reputation out there of our system is complicated and convoluted. What are we going to do to roll it out to let, let the counselors, let the people in the public who've, who've had obstacles with the process know that we've made these wonderful changes? And then know that we're, we've heard what they're saying and, and making the changes to accommodate their needs.
Dr. Narini, two great points, and I'll try to address both if that's okay with you. So the first one regarding getting those, you know, frontline advisors and those counselors, as you named, involved in the process. One, we definitely are and will continue to do so. One piece though of this, we really had to act somewhat, my words, ambitiously to get this off the ground so quickly to influence our spring enrollment because we know we're opening up priority registration in the next couple of weeks. So consequently, we had to make some pretty swift decisions. So we, we did so with the high touch philosophy in mind, along with removing some of those barriers, which were some of the holds, as Bettina mentioned in our conversation earlier. So we did do that somewhat ambitiously, meaning we did so quickly. So we could influence the fall, excuse me, influence the spring semester enrollment, which is opening this fall. So, but we do anticipate as we continue to roll out more changes that yes, indeed, we're going to have our frontline staff, if you will, part of that whole conversation. So we're influencing, we have members that are on the work teams that are helping to, to get this forward. So that's, that's very important that we do so. Now regarding the enrollments, or excuse me, regarding how do we announce more of these changes as we move forward? I definitely think we'll work with our marketing team as we launch and open our enrollment process with priority registration and et cetera, that I think we can within our messaging. I have some very, hopefully, terms that imply the simplification of our process and how we're creating more of a high touch experience for our users, our students, as they go through the process. So that's a great suggestion from your part and we'll work with our marketing team and those that are involved as we sort of announce priority registration, that in that process, we also include some of the, some of the key features, if you will, that'll make this a more streamlined experience for our students.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Because, because I think this is a great opportunity to start promoting what we, what we offer and, and how the process can be, can be fixed. So we need to change the minds out in the community about this process. So we need to, you know, make a big splash with this, I think. The other thing, and these, I've got lots of detailed questions that I won't ask here. But what I'm not seeing here is how we're incorporating, and I think this comes with the processes, in financial aid as part of the whole recruitment and retention piece, I didn't see that much in here. Because, and again, working from the other side of the desk, I know that so many colleges use financial aid, use scholarships, use those kinds of things as a, is a strong recruitment tool. Because I'm excited that we're, we're doing a lot of celebratory things with the students when they're, when they're, when they're admitted. And I strongly encourage, I mean, from what I've seen, the students really enjoy the hard copies, just as long as we don't put confetti in, in the admissions letter, like some universities do and make a mess. Just, just don't put confetti in there. But, but get, get, you know, get the word out to the, to the students because they do make a deal of it at the high schools. They do make a deal of it when they're there. So I'm excited about that. And I'm excited to see how we can incorporate the financial aid piece into it. Because the way it stands now, again, from my, my point, my part, we're getting the financial aid decisions out way too late. And it's, and it's affecting our, our students' enrollment and what their decisions to go. So I encourage you to get the financial piece in there as well. But again, like I said, I had, I had lots of other detailed questions, but I'll save those for, for another time.
Thank you. And next time when you stand up and want to applaud, you could send us a video. Or you could put yourself on video and then we could see. Sorry, moving, moving on. Mrs. McGrath, do you have questions?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bitter Smith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I actually have sort of follow up questions because Dr. Thor asked, I thought, exactly the questions I would have asked, and I appreciate you doing that, Dr. Thor, in terms of the unique platforms and software being developed to, to respond to the unique organization that we have within the district. And so I'm, I'm pleased to hear that there's an opportunity to showcase those in other venues as well. But I, I want to, if I could just briefly better understand, as board members, we all, we get calls about registration problems. You've heard that alluded to by every single board member. I know it's not new news. But I, I'm curious to know if you are anticipating some of those unique solutions to allow one of the, the two different issues I hear consistently about complaints about. And I'm not wanting to focus on any particular individual or circumstance. But because we have multiple campuses and some of our students want to take courses, not just at one campus, but want to grab a particular course or opportunity from another campus, that's a complicated thing to do under our current system. I'm presuming our new interaction and, and software will allow more ease of doing registration for a semester or a lineup of classes from multiple campuses. That's the first experience I, I want to make sure that we're addressing. The second is, we also have this unique and wonderful opportunity with our constituency bases for folks who have been students before coming back to either, as we talked about earlier, complete our education process or take continuing education opportunities that we offer. And sometimes circumstances and names have changed as they move from an earlier affiliation with the community college just to grow a particular campus to a new one. And again, I'm presuming both those circumstances are things that our unique adaption and our unique software programs will be addressing. Am I correct in that assumption?
Board member Bitter Smith, I'll offer that, you're correct in that those are two items that we are, are addressing and are looking, looking to improve upon, particularly the ability for students to seamlessly enroll and find and take classes at multiple campuses. However, what we're doing for the spring, what we talked about in the, in the, in the short term, is not going to alleviate that potent, that particular issue in this moment. But that is something we are looking at as a mid-range, if you will. How do we better support that? That's not necessarily a technology aspect either. I guess I'll offer that as well. Some of that is our own business processes and how we function as a system and how we interact between colleges and from a district perspective. So those are the, I guess, when we looked at the different levers, if you will, from technology and business practices, to me, that, that falls more on the business practices and that we need to have greater attention paid to how do we co-enroll between colleges without it being a hardship on our students? And that's something that it's on our agenda and radar to improve upon and do better. And then I also agree though, or the second point you made regarding sort of that the student experience and how we can do so a little more seamlessly and treat students a little differently depending on their respective interest or goal of why they've come here. I do think that's going to be influenced this spring semester and beyond as we learn better with that. But we know many times board members receive feedback of someone who just wants to take one class, yet they're required to go through XYZ and/or, you know, provide documentation from a decade or two ago when they may have been a Maricopa student at that point in time. And that's where we got in that, sort of that spinning wheel with no progress. And we do think, one, our processes will fix that. And two, we'll have different chat features or that high touch that comes in the middle of that process to avoid that from happening. So that way we don't get someone caught in that spin cycle, if you will, without ever being able to get out. So, so to your first point, our, our spring is not going to resolve that immediately, but we know that's something we're working on from a system level and that's more of a business process aspect with some technology component. The second component though, I'm more confident that we'll see, we'll see improvements upon that in the spring semester.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I, and I did catch the opportunity to have chat feature and more human connectivity to solve problems should actually help in the long term, both situations, I would imagine. I have one other question, if I could, President Sullivan. And that's really also a follow up to, to a question that Dr. Narini or a suggestion that Dr. Narini made about getting the message out about new and improved processes. And for what I just heard again, ongoing improvements to processes for registration. It's definitely a marketing issue and one that clearly has to be going on now. But there's also some opportunities for speed here in communicating this that may not be, the marketing related is they are simply using the existing media opportunities. We have free media opportunities. So I would just suggest that we can look at those quickly and have our, our, our media team help use some of those free information sources out there that could quickly communicate as registration opens, that lots of improvements have been made. I, I think we'll get some traction on that and that's a way of quickly getting that message out. But the other board members have suggested this is extremely important to all of us. And I think this is a critical element in enrollment growth and continued satisfaction for students. So I'm grateful for the rapid attention to this issue. Thank you, President Sullivan. That's what I have.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Lucinski, go ahead.
I really appreciate you said sort of that, that satisfaction component too. Because we, we hear exactly what, what you're hearing too, sometimes that dissatisfaction with the process. And so we're optimistic that these changes for spring are going to improve the, the process. Now, will it lead to enhanced enrollment immediately? We're hoping so. But we're, we're confident though, it's going to lead to a more positive student experience, which we think will hopefully lead to word of mouth, which leads to that continued changing of that narrative of the complicated nature, if you will. So we're So we're very optimistic. I just want to highlight when you mentioned the student satisfaction. We think that's what we're counting on as the greatest outcome of this spring semester changes that we're making.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lysinski, and thank you to all of you who've done your presentations this evening. We really appreciate your attention and to the inquiry that we had, but also the ongoing work that you've been doing in this space. You know, the one privilege of working with this board is how smart everyone is. And so I appreciate all the questions that have proceeded, any comment or questions for me. You know, I applied the use of human-centered design, or in this case, student-centered design. I think it really begins to recalibrate how we look at inquiry and how we then seek solutions. And certainly support Mrs. Nguyen's position on the constant need for feedback and surveys, but that's exactly what student-centered or human-centered design does. I appreciate that, having worked in that arena. You know, the issue of the technology platforms and proprietary versus not is critical. And again, I want to congratulate Dr. Cohen and your team for your application to the foundation and then your success through the process. The issue of consistency, I think, is preying on all of our minds. And as we move to how to support students to move more seamlessly in their disciplines and can maybe complete their necessary coursework based on where they can take it at any given time, can become a real benefit, not just to our enrollment piece, but certainly our retention. And then the ability to move students more quickly into their workplace desires or their further education desires. So I think all of those are really dynamic contributions to something that we're looking at. And I applaud that we're going to be progressive in this area and not look backwards, but instead look forward and keep that motion alive and momentum. And thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for compelling people to think in that regard. I mean, the last thing we as board members want is the phone call or the email or the text that says, "This didn't happen, help." And now I think we're in a better position to understand and appreciate how we can guide those folks that make contact to us so that they can recognize the movement of the district. So as we go forward in this space, given the gears that we saw around the ideal state, and certainly referring to slide number three, where we talked about the enrollment management, critical internal areas, I noticed marketing is certainly on there, the onboarding process, how we look at completion, and then the financial aid support. I think one of our interests as board members would be to continue this conversation and information sharing with you so that we can be aware of all of this. It's hard to be in isolation sometimes and know this is happening, but then hear the concerns whether they are coming from student advisors or whether they're coming from students themselves or this perception of the community of who we are. This is our opportunity to really keep moving and solve a problem that does exist and do so quickly. So I just want to say thank you for your attention to this. I know you're not going to let it go, and the work you're doing is extremely valuable to setting a foundation for quality teaching and learning and success for our students as they move forward. So thank you for that, and we look forward to more informative sessions. And if we have follow-up questions, I assume Dr. Gonzalez will direct them to you for answers from Dr. Lysinski and his teams and Dr. Cohen as we go forward. So Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Lysinski, do you have any comments as we close this conversation out for this evening?
President Sullivan, as always, we appreciate this opportunity to present and then, more importantly, engage in a conversation with the board and to get your feedback. The questions were excellent, suggestions were excellent. And as you were talking about and referencing slide number four, the ideal state, perhaps that's the framework from which we begin to think about this entire process. And anytime that you would like us to come before you and present or to engage in conversation with you, it might be really nice just to reference in terms of this ideal state, which specific gear you want us to come in and discuss. Because at any given time, we are trying as best we can to improve in each of those areas. And what you heard today was a focus really on two areas of multiple in this framework. So thank you and appreciate the praise, but I'm going to deflect that to my team, who's been doing a tremendous job, as you heard here tonight, to move as quickly as possible. And we all get really frustrated when we hear that our students may not be having the ideal experience. So that's certainly not a goal of ours, but it's a goal to improve that so that they can walk away and say really great things about the experience they had at Maricopa from the moment we began to recruit them. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, it's almost 6 o'clock, and our board meeting convenes at 6:30. So with that, there's an opportunity for people to go out of this meeting and hold on to your web connection here, because we will resume at 6:30 for a regularly scheduled board meeting, everyone. So thank you again for this evening, and we'll move forward and adjourn our work session and resume at 6:30 for a regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attention this evening. Maybe you just put yourselves on mute, and then we're good. Tina, are you ready to put the material on the board here, please? Thank you very much. Everyone, it's 6:30 PM, and as I'd like to move forward with our meeting this evening, first, we'd like to thank Tina Nipko for filling in for Elsa Marcias and helping us maneuver through this meeting, tech, online, virtually. And also, I'd like to announce again that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning, if that's your interest. So with that, at this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for October 26, 2021, at 6:30 PM. For the record, I will call a roll call vote at the board members, and I will start with you again, our student trustee, Mr. Quentin Evans. Are you present? Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath?
Present.
Great. Dr. Norini?
Still here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you, and with my presence, a full compliment of board members that are present. In addition, our student trustee is also with us this evening. They're moving through the agenda. There are no substitutions that I've received as of today for the agenda. And then with that, we will move to our faculty executive council report. And Mr. Reditich, will you take over, please?
Good evening, everyone. Last month, I shared with you some of the ways that faculty are helping the district to achieve its goals. I've talked about creating new baccalaureate degrees, operationalizing the new faculty agreement, and implementing guided pathways. These initiatives are big, bold, new, and important, and they will change how Maricopa operates for years to come. But in discussing how faculty help Maricopa achieve its goals, there was one goal that I skipped over. The goal I failed to mention is, it's not big or bold or new, but it is important. The goal I skipped over was educating students. Leaving that goal out felt like a big oversight on my part. And in trying to understand how I could have missed educating students in my list of recent faculty achievements, I was reminded of the following parable told by celebrated author David Foster Wallace. There are these two young fish swimming along, and they happen to meet an older fish swimming the other way, who nods at them and says, "Morning, boys, how's the water?" And the two young fish swim on for a bit, and then eventually, one of them looks over at the other and goes, "What the hell is water?" Wallace meant that the most obvious and important aspects of our lives are often hard to remember. They're so ever-present that they blend into the background. For faculty, teaching is our water. It's not so much what we do as it is who we are. Now, while faculty are constantly teaching, the way that we teach is far from constant. We're continually striving to hone our craft and improve our ability to convey knowledge to our students. Even in fields with long histories, today's classes differ strikingly from the same courses taught in semesters past. To illustrate how our faculty keep their classes new and relevant, I want to discuss just one example tonight, the New Media Lab Experience at Mesa Community College, run by Dr. Eddie Webb. As members of our governing board, some of you are quite familiar with this space, since you've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Webb on podcasts. The primary focus of the New Media Lab Experience is to welcome students of all classes to an open computer lab where they can learn new technologies and collaborate with other students to create multimedia projects. The lab teaches students how to use innovative styles of communicating, like documentary filmmaking, graphic design, and audio podcasting. Additionally, so far, Dr. Webb and his team have trained 76 faculty members to produce multimedia projects. The New Media Lab Experience teaches students how to use industry-standard software and hardware to help them modernize the written word. The process prepares them to be competent and highly sought-after players in the ever-growing field of digital communication. Now, make no mistake, the work these students do moves far beyond arbitrary projects for the sake of learning the technology. The New Media Lab Experience prides itself on emphasizing novel research, meaningful scholarship, and team building. Before they are allowed to even touch a camera to record their project, each of these students must complete at least six weeks of focused research. When students join this program, they begin by organizing into four research teams, each conducting both archival and original research centered in four main areas of study, historical overview, facts and data, analysis and discussion, and findings and recommendations. First, the teams convene a conference to choose a joint topic to research. The students then collaborate to propose a framework, including a community statement, two research questions, and four research goals. All of their research is shared across teams using high-tech tools like Google Docs, Excel spreadsheets, and a Spark page. At the same time, the students create a business plan that includes organizing video production teams and marketing teams. In the end, by engaging with these projects at every step of the way, the students find their own voices and learn to use them in ways that are new, creative, and culturally relevant, all while fostering a learning environment that is fiercely collaborative and engaging. The New Media Lab Experience is a next-generation program where the next generation of students learns next-generation tools to communicate with the next generation, the times they are a-changing. And you can rest assured that Maricopa's curriculum is changing right along with them. Thanks to our faculty and staff working hard to keep up with change, our students will never fall behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Matasich, I tend to sometimes stumble over your last name, and I apologize when I do that. So thank you very much for your report this evening, appreciate it. With that, we'll move to the adjunct faculty report, which was a report submitted in writing. So Dr. Train requires no written, no speaking time at this point. And with that, then, we'll move to the employee senate report with Ms. Anna Chandler and Ms. Shannon Monge. We're ready for your report, please go ahead.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests, thank you for allowing us to present this evening. My name is Shannon Monge, and I am before you today as the co-president for employee representation. Alongside me is Anna Chandler, our other co-president. Tina, do you have our presentation? If not, I can verbalize it, I just didn't want to say next slide if there was nothing. Thank you so much. Next slide, please. As we always do, we like to start off with some welcome and some gratitude. We want to give a huge shout out and thank you to Frank Wilson from District HR, who has offered his commitment to collaborate and continue to give an open line of communication with employee representation in discussions regarding the Mercer work, class and comp, strategic compensation, and HR updates. If we were in person, I'd ask all of you to applaud him, because we all know how hard he is working. I don't know how he finds the hours in the day, but he does, and we are so grateful for that continued collaboration. As most of you are aware, we are starting to build the search committees for the open president positions at SCC, PC, and MCC. And we want to thank the tri-chairs and District HR for allowing representation to be a part of that process in those search committees. It is a joy to be a part of that shared governance and collaboration. And a big congratulations to Dr. Klein Namoa from Phoenix College, as he was announced as the executive sponsor for DAC. Congratulations, we're looking forward to the amazing work that will come from that. Next slide, please. Now, I will not read these verbatim, but as we do every month, we are presenting to you guys representation highlights. And the campus that we are highlighting today is Scottsdale Community College. Go Chokes! So I will leave this slide up for a moment so you can see who your exempt council, excuse me, exempt council reps are. Yvonne, Anna as the co-president, although she is not a representative for the campus, she is taking a lead in helping those representatives and building collaboration and a team effort on that campus, as well as doing her co-president work. I don't know how she does it, she's an amazing partner. Julianne is the other exempt counsel. Next slide, please. Our non-exempt rep is Beverly, and she is also your senator for Scottsdale Community College. As well as Officer Ortiz is the sworn officer representing Scottsdale and sits on the council for them. So again, if you see them on campus, Scottsdale folks or anybody across the system, give them, you know, a pat on the back, they're doing amazing work, not only for Scottsdale, but for staff and officers across the structure. I am very, very pleased and honored to partner and work with them. Next slide, please. As always, we love to thank our staff and faculty for the work that they're doing across the structure. Staff continue to be innovative and supportive, to engage in connections with students. As we know, our students are still struggling with life challenges during the pandemic. Employees are still working to deal with their own challenges and their own new life norms that the pandemic has presented them, and as we get to, quote, "new normal" within our work at our colleges. So we are doing our best as staff and as employees to not only better our students and understand their needs and how we can help them, but doing that for our staff across the structure. And we do continue to work collaboratively with faculty as we look to bring shared governance to fruition within Maricopa. So a huge shout out to Sasha, Camille, Terry, John, and all the other faculty that know a strong relationship between staff and faculty is not only important for employees, but most important for our students. Next slide, please. Just some work that the representation is doing. Our communication team is working on their November newsletter. We have gotten amazing feedback, that team is so wonderful, and the information that they provide monthly, they have taken that to a whole new level, and I am grateful for their work. We are working on restructuring our website to make sure that our record-keeping for all councils, as well as you being able to look up your representatives and the work that they're doing is easy to use. So look forward to that new website, we'll share that with you guys as it comes through. As that was noted in our October newsletter, there is a Halloween employee contest. So go back and look in the October newsletter for those details. So, go back and look in the October newsletter for those details and how you can participate. Anna, you are going to speak to the next slide. Can we see if your internet connection is doing okay?
I'm here. Thank you, Shannon. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you sound good. Take it away.
Awesome. All right, President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members and colleagues. As requested and recommended by board members, we will provide current data on implementation of the remote and virtual work policy. The policy was approved and intended to be operationalized in August of 2021. But leadership across the district wanted more time to plan a strategic implementation, so a compromise was met and the launch date of October 4th was agreed upon. At this time, most campuses are putting the submissions, reviews, and/or approvals of requests on hold until various states in the fall and spring, while a few campuses are not accepting requests at this time. Further implementation date unknown. For those accepting requests, there have been a hundred and twenty-two requests across the district for some, for some sort of remote and virtual work arrangement. At this time, it is our understanding that the vast majority of these requests are currently in pending status for the reasons stated previously. District Office currently is the only unit to complete requests and arrangements. Some campuses have begun the recruitment process for new positions that are designated for either virtual or remote in some capacity. At this time, there are four total. Next slide, please. Staff continues to collaborate with HR in regards to Mercer. And we thanked Frank Wilson earlier in the presentation, but we must also acknowledge all of HR, District HR's team, and those collaborating at a campus level. You guys have done wonderful work with us as employee representation and helped guided us and really tried to understand where our viewpoint is coming through all the different situations we're handling at this time. We really appreciate all of your hard work and efforts to do the best you can for employees. Employees are able to ask questions and gain clarity through some difficult situations, and we seem to come out with a proactive outcome during, um, sorry, outcome, as well as a transparent and open-minded communication. Mercer will be providing updates to staff in November, and many employees are looking forward to their report out. Next slide, please. And last but not least, we will want to continue to share, um, the DEIE work that is happening within our district. Here are the calendar events for the end of October going into November. Current session, um, currently, all the sessions have been well-attended, and staff are finding the topics beneficial to participate in. And employee representation will continue to encourage employees and others to engage and participate in these events. Thank you so much for your time this evening and continuing to have us report out to you.
Thank you, and always great to hear your good work. I also appreciate the gratitude you show each time. I think we all probably could do a better job at that. So, so thank you for your leadership in that regard. With that, we'll move to the student life reports, and I understand we have a presentation from Glendale Community College. So, to those of you who are presenting, please, uh, come forward.
Good evening. I'm Connie Greenwell. I'm the Student Life Director from GCC. And our formal, um, welcome or hello or introductions are in that video. So, if we could roll that, it would be great.
I will remind people that are on the phone, you probably won't be able to see the video. It will hopefully be posted to YouTube where you can catch up. But for those of us who are on video this evening, uh, we will welcome the video. Thank you.
I just wanted to announce that, uh, the audio will not also be available to those calling in either, but the entire presentation will be part of the recorded meeting.
Thank you, Tina.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, Dr. Reese, members of the CEC and guests. We are the Student Life Division of Glendale Community College. My name is Connie Greenwell, and I am the Student Services Manager for Student Leadership. Before we begin, I would like to take this time to thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to share the work we have done and the work that lies ahead. As we rebound into the future, we are filled with excitement and are optimistic for what that future looks like as our now-normal unfolds on its way to our new normal. This year's presentation is different from what we normally provide in that we, as a division, are going to give you an overview of our past year that includes points of pride, opportunities for growth, and a vision of our new direction as we work continuously to provide engaging opportunities that serve to foster the success of our students. With that, we would like to share our experiences and insight with you this evening.
Hi, my name is Dr. Peter Olustrek, and I am the Director of Athletics here at Glendale Community College. On behalf of all of the GC Athletics Department, we'd like to thank you for all the support we receive to bring all of our coaches, staff, and athletic teams back to campus for the 2122 academic year. We are excited for the upcoming year as we will continue with GCC's success in the classroom, as well as on the field. We will provide our student athletes with positive experiences that will bring lifelong memories. Our goal is to ensure a safe environment for all of our teams while focusing on fostering a culture of character, sportsmanship, and respect. Again, thank you for all that you do for GCC Athletics. Go Gauchos!
Disability Resources and Services continues to provide training and support for DRS Connect, our district-wide database. We approved over twenty-four hundred accommodation requests for over nine hundred students in nineteen hundred classes. Our largest populations were ADHD, autism, and learning disabilities. The audio of this production stopped for a few seconds. This is an example of when access is not provided. Accessibility matters. Last year, the DRS office captioned almost fifty thousand minutes for three thousand instructor videos and eight hundred ASL interpreted videos. Students requested alternative format for five hundred books. Two hundred fifty students requested a note-taker or equipment, and fifteen hundred tests were processed. Last year, we had two hundred twenty new students. How did we have such a successful year? We delivered results by being...
Hello, my name is Alyssa McKenney, Program Coordinator for the GCC Excel Program, and these are some of the peer mentors. Together over the last year, we have accepted and overcome every challenge presented by the pandemic. In the process, we created more opportunities for our students to connect and stay engaged with Excel. We utilize new technology to leverage the benefits of our programming and reach our students through Zoom, Canvas, and Cranium Cafe. Emerging from campus closures, we have adapted the program to suit both digital and in-person learners. Our new normal is filled with opportunity and creative solutions.
Hello, I am Adriana O'Toole.
And I'm Christian Loetta.
And we are both lead peer mentors from the program, as well as GCC and Excel alumni. With the transition to an online environment, we wanted to provide easy remote access to our programming and resources. The answer to that was designing our own Canvas information page.
Since most students spend a majority of their designated academic time in Canvas, we knew this would be the easiest avenue to convey our opportunities to them. Our course offers information on upcoming program and campus events, scholarships, and resources.
And now we've come full circle, back to student life. Nineteen months ago, our focus was primarily set on student engagement. Fast forward to today, and that focus is one of many: basic needs, homelessness, food insecurity, DES and SNAP needs, civic responsibility, and engagement as an extension of the classroom. We retooled and moved into a virtual engagement world within a matter of weeks. Since the infamous spring break departure from normal as we knew it, we've created a virtual bulletin board for activities and community postings, a permanent virtual club fair for our organizations, virtual versions of our signature events, knowledgeable and recognition activities, and cultural activities. Student Leadership also has a comprehensive Basic Needs Food Pantry page that provides up-to-date assistance information for anyone with internet access. There, our students are able to locate emergency information and take advantage of opportunities available to them as students. This includes food insecurity and utilities assistance, referrals for TIBRA, which is a tenant-based rental assistance program that is a partnership with the City of Glendale and Anew Leaf. GCC students, faculty, and staff volunteers, as well as student leadership, have been hosting no-contact drive-through food distribution since March of 2020. Those distributions have provided food for a total of nineteen hundred households, feeding in excess of eighty-six hundred people. The college's food pantry has been open throughout the pandemic on a limited basis. This semester, however, we've reopened fully to approximately fifty unduplated patrons daily. A link to the Student Leadership Center site and resources will be placed in the chat, along with links to the respective departments who presented here this evening. Our primary goal is to fully enrich our students' experience, to give them confidence and the support needed to develop skills to aid them in achieving their goals, educational or otherwise. We fully realize that none of it would be possible if it wasn't for the support of our administration and the support of all of you. Thank you once again for affording us this opportunity to present to you this evening. We are the Student Life Division of Glendale Community College, and we are...
Wow, that's a great ending. Wanted to thank you for your attention to our students and the good work that you're representing.
Oh, thank you so much. It was...
You're very welcome. I'm sure we all appreciated seeing the video of each of those elements that contribute to student success. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
With that, um, the next item on our agenda is emeritus words and recognitions. There are none this evening, and so I'll move directly to the chancellor's report. Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC and guests that are with us tonight. I've got two brief updates, and one of them, um, you know, I believe we already communicated to this via email, but I wanted to share publicly here that we were really excited about an opportunity where the Maricopa Community College Foundation, in collaboration with workforce economic development offices in our colleges, was awarded one million dollars in support of advancing entrepreneurship for Maricopa Community College District. Uh, the National Wells Fargo CEO, Charlie Shorff, was in attendance and presented this award at a Business Roundtable Discussion on Small Business Development hosted at the downtown CEI Lab Force Building, where we were also, um, fortunate to have Governor Ducey attend the event and welcome, uh, our guest into our facility. We also had Foundation Leadership, and this event was also attended by Governing Board Chair, President Sullivan. This is coming on the heels of a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from Bank of America for over two years that will focus on disadvantaged students, and, um, I wish I could share this one. Uh, I can tell you that we are awaiting and have been notified that we've received another five-hundred-thousand dollars, but we can't disclose the grant or until we have a communications plan, um, soon. And if we, if we bring in what Dr. Cohen shared with us earlier today, based on the bill and Linda Gates Foundation, that's another five hundred. So, here in just a matter of a few weeks, I'm happy to report that our system has received upwards of two-point-five million dollars in efforts to serve our community, serve our students. And, um, I think that that's a vote of confidence in our system. I just want to say thank you, um, to Brian Spicker and his team for helping lead those efforts. I want to thank our, our college faculty, presidents, and staff that have been instrumental, because these are extremely, uh, complex opportunities that arise, sometimes at the invitation of, of these organizations to support us, other times at the, um, us making the ask to these organizations. But it's a, it's a group effort, and, um, I just want to say, uh, thank you to everybody who's involved in bringing in those additional dollars into our system. Secondly, um, and typically, if we were face-to-face, you would look out and you would see a number of women who are attending the board meeting, and I believe that most, if not all, are with us virtually tonight. And they are members of the Linda B. Rosenthal Women's Mentor Program that's designed to provide opportunities for Maricopa women to focus on individual learning goals and professional opportunities within the Maricopa Community College District. So, this is an opportunity to encourage these employees to prepare for and seek professional growth opportunities. Just a little bit of stats regarding this, this year's cohort. It's the twenty-second cohort in our system. It has thirty-six mentees participating in the program, which means that there are also thirty-six mentors that they've been assigned to. Uh, we've got one from Chandler Gilbert, two from Australia, four from District Office, two from Glendale, fourteen from Gateway, three from Mesa, two from, uh, Phoenix College, five from Paradise Valley, one from Rio, and two from Scottsdale Community College. These participants have diverse backgrounds, levels of education, and they represent all areas of the organization. Thus far, the Women's Mentor Program has graduated more than five-hundred-and-ten women through our most recent year. And, uh, the Women's Mentor Program is co-chaired by Dr. Kathleen Hernandez and Dr. Heather Cruzey, and they are supported by a loving, dedicated, and committed Maricopa women employees. And I want to commend them for their leadership and their passion, and certainly for the support that these employees provide to make this program function. I had the wonderful opportunity to spend, uh, about an hour with these, um, ladies on Friday morning, where I was able to share some updates and personal revision about Maricopa. And I was extremely impressed with the group and challenged by the questions that they asked. And, um, it was just a wonderful opportunity to meet them. So, I want to congratulate, uh, this group for participating in this wonderful program. Best wishes to them, and if they were here, I would ask them to stand and, 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 um, let you see who they are, but I'm going to ask them to virtually stand and be, um, represented here and acknowledged. So, um, so again, congratulations and thank you to all. President Sullivan, that concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you. Uh, well, maybe we can all take ourselves off mute for one second. And while our mentees are standing, I see all these still, but let's give them a round of applause. So, for those of you who are on mute, I'm going to give you one, two, three, ten seconds. Let's all come off of mute. And, okay, let's, yay! Yeah, congratulations to those. Um, I have the distinct pleasure to represent District Three, which was also Linda Rosenthal's district when she served on the board. So, um, I know that she would be so, um, proud and impressed by the work that is being done in this area, and congratulations to all the women who are involved in this effort, both mentors and mentees. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, for your report this evening, and congratulations to the foundation. That's outstanding work to attract two-point-five million dollars. With that, I want to remind folks that this is the time on our agenda where we have a citizens interim. It's posted online, of course, as the criteria by which we function under citizens interim. So, I won't read those guidelines, but I do want to indicate that we're always interested if someone chooses to present during that time period under the rules and the, uh, way that we can manage that. With that, though, there is no, uh, request at this time for citizens interim, but I did want to remind people that that, in the public, that that does exist as an option to address the board. With that, I'm going to now move to the consideration for the consent agenda items. All items under the section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. So, do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to remove number two.
Remove number two. Okay, and number two is approval of the 2022 state legislative agenda and 2022 federal policy and budgetary agenda. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. That has been moved, uh, for us to consider and consent. Is there any other item? Anyone else wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Being none, is there a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda minus item number two, uh, as presented?
I'm moved.
That you, Mrs. Nguyen?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Is any opposed? The motion to approve the consent... The motion to approve the consent agenda passes seven-zero. Then moving forward with item number two, as I previously read, approval of the 2022 state legislative agenda and 2022 federal policy and budgetary agenda. Is there a motion to approve item number two?
I move to approve item number two.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Is there a second?
Second. I second the motion.
Okay, is that you, Ms. Bittersmith?
It is.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second to approve item two as previously read. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to discuss the motion.
Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
We're in a time of recession. I'm sure everyone's aware of that. And we're also in a time of highly, highly increasing property values. We are going to have a huge amount of funding that we've never had in the past due to this increase in property values, because we get seventy-four-point-six percent of our income from property taxes, and it's just going to expand exponentially this year. I'm very embarrassed that in the legislative agenda, we have item after item. We're asking for more funding. I don't know about other neighborhoods, but in my neighborhood, there are many people who will probably lose their homes because they can no longer afford the huge taxation increase that they will have to be paying. I live in a retirement community. There are many people who are outliving their money, and for the Community College District, which is so well-funded, to ask for more money for all of these various programs is very embarrassing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Being none, I'm going to call. Yes, go ahead, someone?
President Sullivan.
Yes, Ms. Bittersmith.
I understand. I just wanted to comment. I understand certainly where Mrs. McGrath is coming from. The funding requests in the legislative agenda are focused on those grant programs that we know are coming. It's not intended on a tax increase from our property tax base. So I want to make sure that that's clear, that what Mrs. McGrath is referencing to has to do with monies that are being appropriated from existing grant programs and programs that are coming federally, as opposed to impacting the tax rate or tax collection base from Maricopa County. But I understand what she's suggesting, and it's all money, and it's coming from other locations. The ability for our district to control that allocation, I think, is the differential in what our agenda suggests versus us attempting to go to legislature and asking for additional increases. I would welcome any staff response to that if appropriate.
Thank you. Is Ms. Remfro, or Dr. Gonzalez, to make comment on that?
Yes, Darcy Remfro should be available, if you want to unmute and.
I am here, Madam President, Mrs. Bittersmith, members of the board. The legislative agenda is meant to provide position should some of the opportunities present themselves. So in most of the examples where funding is mentioned, we're looking for opportunities to get supports for our students, particularly since the state does not provide currently any support for students at community colleges, although it does provide support for university students, et cetera, and in the K-12 space. So as those opportunities present themselves, we want to be in a position to know how this board, how the board would like us to proceed. In the case of STEM funding, it is a formula that is set within the budget, and we are simply asking that we get that formula. There are two to three other formulas in the budget that we do not request funding for. As the model in 2015 went from third support from the state, third from property tax, third from tuition, eliminating and fully a third of the funding source. And so the STEM formula is something that we have been in conversations with the legislature and the governor's office as they are looking at what parts of the formula to fund and to whom they fund they send the funds to. This, I wouldn't articulate our positions to be that necessarily that we are proactively looking for additional funding for these items, but looking for opportunities as they present themselves for promised scholarships, for student scholarships that we want the legislature and the governor to remember our community college students to.
Thank you, Ms. Remfro. Board members, are there any, is there any further discussion or comments? Being none, I don't hear any. Mrs. McGrath, there's nothing further that you'd like to comment on?
Thank you. No.
Thank you. With that, then, I'll take a vote on the motion. All those to approve the legislative agenda as presented with its articulation under state legislative agenda and 2022 federal policy and budget. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
From what I can hear, there are six plus our student trustee who approved the motion and one who voted nay. So with that, the motion carries six-zero. Thank you.
Six-one.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the support in watching my. You're absolutely right. And Mrs. McGrath, I wasn't neglecting you. I apologize. Okay, six-one. And with that, then, we'll move to the non-consent agenda items. Are there any comments? There being none on that for further action? We have our first reading and information items under item H, employment and separations. Any comments or questions? Moving to our monitoring report, budget analysis report fund one, any comments or questions? Being none, I'll move to our governing board reports. And Mr. Evans, I'll start with you this evening. Anything you'd like to share with us, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, President Sullivan. So first and foremost. Sorry about that. I cut out.
Yeah, you did, but we want you back.
First and foremost, I have been making a huge effort to connect with all ten colleges. And I'm looking at meeting with the various student body presidents and the student governments to make sure that any items that the government board is hearing that students are getting that information on. However, going more into community events and stuff like that, personally, I'm trying to ramp up my civic engagement, actually, by attending Mesa City Council meetings. It's a small item, but it's something that I'm very passionate about. And alongside that, I'm actually looking at new volunteer opportunities.
Well, thank you, Mr. Evans. It's hard to stay engaged sometimes due to the virtual nature of our work right now. But thank you for what you're doing, and we certainly will appreciate any information or insight and feedback that you can give us about the student experience and student activities on our many campuses. So thank you for your work in that effort. Mrs. Nguyen, do you have any comments for us this evening?
No, I just wanted to acknowledge the law enforcement efforts, the battle of the badges, I believe it's called, that was conducted on Mesa's campus on Saturday, and that is done to raise money for shop with the cops. And I just continue to be very proud of our law enforcement that have served us throughout this entire time and just acknowledge the great work that they do on all ten of our campuses and continue to appreciate how they take care of our public safety and how they are engaged with the community and how they are looking out for those that are very less fortunate that without us wouldn't have Christmas. So I just wanted to be appreciative of that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. It's a good reminder for all of us. So thank you. Dr. Thor?
Thank you. Along with President Sullivan, Susan Bittersmith, and Chancellor Gonzalez, I had the opportunity to attend the Association of Community College Trustees Leadership Conference in San Diego, October thirteenth through sixteenth. And the four of us presented a session called Lessons Learned to Successfully Obtain Baccalaureate Degree Authority Through Collaboration. Obviously, this was the story of our successful passage. In 2021, of the baccalaureate legislation, thought the presentation went very well and was well-received by the audience. I also was honored to have been elected the chair of the Pacific Region Nominating Committee, and this is the body that will make recommendations for seats on the ACCT board for next year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Smith?
Oh, good evening. Just a short update that I'm looking forward to meeting with the president of Chandler Gilbert Community College and leadership there, vice presidents and deans. I think it is the remaining college as part of my tour that I was delayed in reconnecting with that leadership. So looking forward to engaging with those leaders. That's my report for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Norene?
Thank you. No real report, just a couple shout-outs. I wanted to highlight something that was in Dr. Gonzalez's weekly report a couple weeks ago that really shines a light, one of the bright spots in our enrollment, with our dual enrollment up by nineteen percent over last year. We had over three thousand new students enrolled in dual enrollment this year. So I'd like to give a shout-out to all the early college folks out there who've done a magnificent job in working with those students. It's no easy task to get them all enrolled. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Don Williams and the Scottsdale Theater Arts Program for a wonderful play, Let's Let the Right One In. I encourage you, there's a couple more performances going on this weekend. I encourage you to go see the play. It's outstanding. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Ms. McGrath?
I have no report. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Ms. Bittersmith, are you there? Have you had to? Hello?
No, my muting was slow in the draw. My apologies, President Sullivan. I too would just like to tell the board I was honored to join Dr. Thor and President Sullivan and Chancellor Gonzalez on the panel that Dr. Thor described and agreed with her, that I thought it was well-received, and had folks catch me afterwards with a few questions. And I've had at least one email follow-up. So there were people in the audience that were listening. And again, I was honored to join more seasoned members of the board in making that presentation. And I also wanted to tell the board members that was a very helpful conference for me, just a general exposure to other community college organizations and how they operate in conversation. And I was grateful for that opportunity as well to spend some educational time with President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, and Chancellor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Ms. Bitters. Well, thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. And for me, it's similar in terms of some of my more recent activities. I too was honored to be a presenter with my colleagues in San Diego at the ACCT conference. And beyond that, there is opportunities there to engage with fellow trustees throughout Arizona and across the United States. And there's always good learning in one of those, whether one is seated next to someone at a luncheon table or attending a workshop, which provided a lot of insight and represented a lot of learning and activity that is happening across the United States. And what that brought to mind is we're doing our own good work, and it's a reflection on our leadership and also our faculty and staff, and particularly in the successes of our students that we shine. And so with that, I want to express my own gratitude for all of you that are contributing and leaders in our space in Maricopa County and its impact in broader audiences. I was really excited to be invited to attend the foundation. Well, I guess it was the Wells Fargo Meeting, Business, Nonprofit, Roundtable, Individuals, where the CEO of Wells Fargo made the announcement that we will be awarded the one million dollars for advanced entrepreneurship. It was really exciting, and I wanted to thank the foundation for working with everyone, staff and faculty, to develop the RFP that led to, not the RFP, the grant application that led to the award. That's really a significant contribution from a private entity. And it was just really rewarding and to hear stories and the potential impact that this will bring to our students and small businesses. So thank you and congratulations there. And then on a more personal level, I have to say thank you to the techies. While just before I went to San Diego, all of our internet crashed at my home. And as most of you know, I work virtually. And it certainly impacted the information that I receive or not receive through the district. So Ryan Everling got on his white horse and came and supported me to get back online so I could be linked with all of you. And I want to give a shout-out to him and all of the technology crew that works to make that happen. With that, I also want to announce some things that are coming up. Certainly, our next November meeting together is November sixteenth. We'll have a work session and an agenda review, an agenda review. So that meeting will start at four-thirty. I also want to announce on November twenty-third, which is the date of our regular board meeting, we will also have a work session that starts at 5:00 PM. That will be on the budget. So please mark your calendars accordingly. And board members, we will be moving forward with our mini-retreat Friday evening, November thirteen, and Saturday, November fourteen. We've honed in on some locations. You'll be receiving that information. And so stay tuned, and I hope your computers and internet work so you can get all of that information. With that, I want to again thank everyone for joining us this evening and also for the great information that was shared. Thank you, all of you, for being attentive with us through both work session and into this meeting. Wish you all a good evening, and we'll be in touch soon. So thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.